Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled November 11th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am John Mead, Vice Chairman of the Commission, filling in for Chairman Scott Stocking. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I am joined by City Planner Jayton True, our public hearing transcriber, and other commissioners present. Virtual attendees may watch or participate in the livestreamed meeting by accessing the link provided on the meeting agenda found on the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see Notice Regarding Meeting and Public Comment Rule modification due to COVID-19, a link to which is provided on the agenda for the meeting this evening. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing regarding Agenda Item 5A: Consideration for Proposed Amendment to the Geneva Business Park Plan Unit Development to Allow an Animal Rescue Not Including Boarding or Kenneling as a Permitted Use. As the Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public applicant and commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined on the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing, and the applicant will provide an opening statement and brief overview of their requests. Commission members will first have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called on virtually or in person and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name and address when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. We remind members of the public to refrain from varying off-topic and direct comments that are germane to the requests being considered. Following the end of the public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to comprehensively answer questions and respond to any of the comments made from the members of the public. Additional questions or comments may be stated by the Commission, but the public comment will not be reopened. The public hearing may then be closed following by Commission deliberation on the request. Any person speaking during the public hearing agree and understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirmed to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. In order to help with the quality of the meeting broadcast, I would remind all commissioners to mute themselves except when they are addressing the Commission. Commissioners joining virtually will also need to state their name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers. For example, Mead, aye, nay, or abstain. Celeste, would you please call the roll?
Evans, aye.
Halliman. Matoskill.
Matoskill here.
Mead.
Mead here.
Slifka.
Slifka here.
Moran.
Moran here.
Stocking, you have a quorum.
We have a quorum, so we will proceed.
Agenda.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to entertain a motion to approve the agenda or change the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda, Slifka.
Second, Moran.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reimposed? Agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the October 14th, 2021 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of the October 14th, 2021 meeting, Slifka.
Second, Matoskill.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is for Starfish Animal Rescue, an amendment to the Geneva Business Park Plan Unit Development Ordinance 1993-59 to Include Animal Rescue Not Including Boarding or Kenneling as a permitted use. Location of the property is at 204 Dearborn Court, Units 101 and 102. The applicant is Laura LaChelt on behalf of Starfish Animal Rescue. At this time, Jayton, do you have anything to read into the record?
Yes, Vice Chair. So, the contents of this file include an application for a very, excuse me, an application for a PUD amendment by Laura LaChelt on behalf of Starfish Animal Rescue dated September 11th, 2021, including the following items: project narrative, legal description, land use opinion application, stormwater exemption letter, list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. The contents of the file also includes a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certification of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on October 27th, 2021 for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated November 11th, 2021, as well as written public comments.
Okay, before we begin the public hearing, would anyone that is anticipating speaking tonight and providing testimony, if you'd please stand and raise your right hand? I'm going to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that anything you say as testimony this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain comments from the applicant.
My name is Lori Luckel, and I would like to thank you on behalf of Starfish Animal Rescue for the opportunity to submit our plans for 204 Dearborn Court, Unit 101 and 102. Starfish is a nonprofit volunteer foster-based rescue that has been in existence since 2012, licensed since 2012, but the rescue has been operating since 2009. We transport animals from two high kill shelters in Kentucky. We also have rescued from local shelters here in the area. Our operation is we transport these animals in sprinters or vans, bring them up to our building currently that we rent in Batavia. The animals are unloaded, crates are cleaned, and then other rescues and shelters come and they take the animals to their places, to their facilities. Any animals that we pull or take from the shelters that Starfish is going to be in care of go into local foster homes. We follow the Department of Agriculture guidelines and rules as far as that while being in Batavia. I have a lot of recommendation from our landlord stating that they've never had any issues with us: noise, waste, cleanliness. We've been a great tenant to them, also a previous landlord. Basically, the building that we're in now that we've rented has been sold, so we're looking for a place to purchase so we don't have to move again. We've looked for years and years and years for a building, and we feel that 204 Dearborn would be a great location for us. Our operation is not a shelter, so I know there's not a lot of information on rescues. Shelters are where you bring animals, you adopt from there, there's money exchanged, animals are kept there, boarded there. That is not what we are. We're a rescue. So, we pull animals, they go out into the community and homes. What we want to use the facility for is operational. We store our food there, our medicines, our leash collars, crates, blankets, donations for us to do the operation of taking care of these animals. We've helped communities. The two shelters that we help in Kentucky are some of the poorest communities in the nation. We do Christmas drives, school drives, food drives for them. I could tell you the community has supported us wholeheartedly. We're in a more residential area where we're at now. We have many volunteers from that area that come and continue to help. Let's see. The building that we put earnest money down, we're hoping to purchase, there's really no anything aesthetic we're going to do through the property. There might be some improvements on the interior that, of course, we'd go through the proper channels to get permits for, but nothing would change in that area. As far as the animals being there, we operate, we're all rescue, we're all volunteers, so we operate every other Saturday approximately four hours, occasionally five, sometimes three. Animals usually come in about 7:00 AM on our trucks, they're unloaded, everything's, dogs are walked, watered, cleaned, the building's cleaned, sanitized, the crates go back on the vans, and we're out of there by 12:00. We've talked to many of the tenants on the Dearborn properties. Many of them have dogs, many of them support us, but bring dogs to the building. We've explained our operation to them. We've had nothing but positive feedback from them. We did have some problems with the association manager or president, and he asked that we get two letters from the tenants directly next to us. We spoke to Fona, and they said they have no problem with it, and then we just have not been able to contact, I believe there's a, some sort of musical studio or theater, musical theater, that operates a few times out of the year. They have practices, but it doesn't seem like any of our operations would coincide with them. So, the only time that there would be parking and people and volunteers and animals would be every other Saturday for those few hours. Other than that, it's just, like I said, operation, a warehouse for us.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Moran.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just had one question. We have in our notes the size of the building in total. How big are the two units you intend to purchase?
I believe it's a total of 3,000 square feet.
And how does that compare to the space you're in now? Is this about space needs or just you're losing your lease because of buildings being so?
We're losing our lease, yes. I'll tell you, we've been searching, and it's very hard to find a single unit or property that's not 50,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet, so 3,000 is 500 more than what we have now. We're at 2,500 square feet, so it gives us a little extra room. And yeah, that should, that would meet our needs exactly what we're looking for.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Any others? Commissioner Slifka.
Just a couple of questions. So, just a little more detail first on frequency. So, these are scheduled essentially twice a month. Could they ever be more? Could they occur during the week if there were weather issues, things like that?
No, because it's volunteers, and we really do count on our volunteers. It's kind of hard to deviate from that every other Saturday. Occasionally, if we do do an emergency transport, there's too many animals at the shelter, we need to get a mom and puppies out or certain circumstances, we will do a transport, but not necessarily use the building. We might use another facility, we might meet at a gas station on the middle of the expressway, you know, off the expressway. We really don't, there really isn't any more than two. Occasionally, we've done emergency transport, but it's not in the volume that we do on every other weekend, every other Saturday.
And so, just, so the animals or the dogs come in, and they come into the building? Is that right? While the?
Yep, we unload them in their crates. We have someone come and our core group comes, we leash the animal, we hand it off to the volunteer, they walk the dog. Meanwhile, people are cleaning their crates. Once the dogs are walked, watered, and cleaned up immediately, just like any dog walker, you know, should in village, you know, rules, we clean up after the animals, then they're put back in their crate and then loaded onto the next vehicle to go, you know, we have rescues in Wisconsin, in Chicago, in Naperville, Roselle, you know, to the NESC rescue.
So, all the dogs aren't there the whole time, then? They're there various times between 8:00 and 12:00 from when they're picked up?
All the dogs come on one transport vehicle, so all the dogs are there at once, they're unloaded, volunteers walk them, they're put back in their crates, and then each rescue takes the animals to their destination.
So, they're leave as, they leave as they're picked up?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can't see you, ma'am, so I'm not sure if you've...
I have no questions.
Okay. So, largely, from my perspective, largely, it's an administrative office, if I got this right. Most of the time, it's a vacant building, or a volunteer may be there that's tidying up or moving some stored materials around. Every other Saturday or a couple, two or three Saturdays a month, you will have a delivery, and the entire operations, the operational perspective, the dog, the dog operations, start and stop within a morning's time typically.
Yes.
The dogs don't spend the night, they're off to their foster home.
Correct.
We, and I'll share that we have a dog that we got from Starfish in 2017, and our interaction was with an adopt, the person that had the dog in their temporary care brought it to our house, and then we had to pick the dog up when we were approved the following week in Lamont at their home. So, we never went to the facility, it was all, so this sounds exactly like what we went through. They had, our dog came from Hazard, Kentucky, and was basically handed off to this foster person until it found a home, so it was very efficient, and we dealt with it, so. At this time, I think the commissioners have had their first comments. Is there any, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
You can sit.
Good evening, commissioners.
Hello.
My name's Leo Lanahan. I'm the, one of the, we built the building in 2000...
Leo, could you provide your address for us, please?
Sure. Our address is 968 West Lake Street, Roselle, Illinois 60172. I'd like to find out, because I've heard from a tenant of ours, that the number of dogs that are brought in is, can be substantial, and I'd like to ask the response from the shelter.
If you ask your questions, then we'll give her an opportunity to come back up once you're done. Thank you.
So, so I'm, that's a concern. The other thing is, is the dog walking, the dogs, we have common areas. We, to the east of us, we had the food bank, and to the east of them is Fona, and to the south of Fona is the French Company Roquette. So, we're primarily in a food service area. So, this doesn't compose my comment, or am I just responding to the?
You're allowed to make whatever comments you want to make on this matter, and then the applicant will be given an opportunity to come up later after the public comments are done to respond to anything that they've heard.
Okay, then, if I may...
But Leo, this is, this is your opportunity to, Leo?
Yes.
This is your opportunity to provide your public comment and provide any testimony for this application.
Okay. Okay, so I've introduced myself, and we're located there, we've done that. So, I'm the property manager for the Avril Road Condominium Association, and comprises of a building located at 204 Dearborn Court, as said. There are 24 condo units, each of 1,500 square feet, so that's 36,000 square feet in total. Typically, these, Dearborn, Dearborn was a general contractor, and Garden Six Joint Venture was the actual developer of the park, and we have worked as a team in developing these type, these tech and small business units. And when we came to Geneva, we purchased the property in the Geneva Business Park for the limited and clean innocuous uses contained therein. In fact, we wrote into our condo deck banning dirty use, which we call automotive repair businesses, as those are incongruent with the planned business profile that we envisioned for these type of buildings. We never actually envisioned that there would ever be live animals at the facility as we would have, in height, had we had thought of that, we would have, we would have, I think, banned them as well. And it's not that we, you know, I've had dogs my whole life, and I empathize with the use that are being requested here. But I find it to send incongruous use with these small businesses. They're mostly tech-type companies or internet-type companies. In fact, Fona has six units, and I believe they're all individual, and what happens, Fona sends over development teams into different parts of these units. They want to get them out of their facility because of the distractions in the ordinary course of their thing. Roquette does exactly the same thing. In fact, in one of the units, there is a mini food processing plant, it's just something the size of the area in front of us here, in front of you. So, there's a lot of tech work, there's a lot of stuff that's going on that requires, you know, quiet enjoyment, which, you know, they're entitled to. There's a physicist in there. He's been there since the very beginning, and he came in with an outside contractor for Fona in a separate unit, and he's the guy that actually, he's a world-famous expert in food processing and including the flavors and other parts of that. Roquette is exactly the same. The physicist, however, he has products that he put on the International Space Station, and so he's, you know, pretty sophisticated guy. I believe he, no, he held a chair at the University of Chicago, physics chair at the University of Chicago, and now he's working in the food processing, developing some kind of magnetic electronic thing that they use to sterilize food, crude containers for the business. So, in addition to that, we have two brand-new beverage startup companies, so we're still maintaining the integrity of the bulk of that building is food service-related. We have three women-owned businesses, two of them are internet-type companies, and Stage Works, who's been there for a long time, you know, has a theater group for grade schoolers and has blessed us as a user for many years. She is one of the, she is two, she's the fourth unit from, just adjacent to the proposed use in 101 and 102. And as a conflict, the theater group holds regularly, they hold productions for the parents and grandparents of the children that are there. They generally are Friday, Fridays, Saturdays, and a matinee on Sundays. So, there is conflict with that user, and she's been with us for 12 years, she's in existing use, and indeed, a quiet and clean use. So, the proposed zoning change, in my opinion, would create a disruption to the existing users. Any occupancy that involves any animals, in this case, dogs, would introduce the real concern that dogs will and do bark. I don't know, I don't know a dog that doesn't bark. There are some that are controlled, but so, so we, and so, when these, when the animals are delivered, and Marjorie called me and went through the same item that was brought up before, they are brought there, and she said on every other Saturday between 8:00 and 12:00, just as we've heard before, however, they are a lot, there's a potty break in there, too. Obviously, these dogs are traveling from, some of them from Kentucky and some of them from around the state here. So, I can't imagine the being delivered and picked up all in that short period of time. I'm sure they are, but nevertheless, the dogs are going to be inside that building, and like any warehouse, we got a tin roof. You don't have a drop ceiling like we have here, so guess what? The sounds are just amplified by bouncing off of that metal deck that's in the warehouse area. So, we have, you know, we have that as a concern. So, there's, so they're bought from Kentucky. I don't, again, I don't know how many dogs, that was my original question here, I'm not going to repeat it. And so, we feel if this, if this use were approved in the Geneva Business Park, then there doesn't appear to be any restrictions. There's no way of enforcing, well, what happens if they, and what, who knows what the future holds, maybe five years, 10 years from now, if this were a use, we, unless there's restrictions saying you can only do it on Saturdays between 9:00 and 4:00, then we could have it every day. And then during the day, since there would be no, that timeframe is not a condition, eight to five, from 8:00 till noon, it could be all day. We know they can't be boarded, and I understand that term. I'm not sure I know what kenneling is. So, I mean, I don't, I don't have a definition of that, and I'm not, I'm not quite understanding what that means. So, so, you know, over time, perhaps not now, we could see a situation where we're having these, the dogs being there during the day, inside the building, except, of course, what do we do in the winter? What are these, the dogs are going to go on the common areas? When the snow's on the ground, they're going to go in the parking lot? Are we going to have the tenants? I can't, I can't imagine going out, picking up in the snow in winter, on a paved surface, paved snow surface. I don't know how you, I don't know how you can accomplish that. And so, there's three months a year, at least, March to, oh, no, I should say January through the end of March and maybe even early April, when you can't, I don't think you can take these dogs out and walk them when they're in, with our cold here up in Chicagoland. So, so, as the, as the property manager for the association, when we found this out, we did express to the buyer, which I'm a little confused by because the purchaser of the building is Marjorie Swift, so I don't know, we have, so I'm assuming that there the, the rescue is going to be simply a tenant of the, of the, of this user. But I have, I did do a voice, I did call around and talk to the owners, or the bulk of the owners, actually 19 of the 24 owners, units owned. Two of the other, the missing ones are the ones that they're, that they're, they have a contract, or Marjorie has a contract to buy in her own name. And the other three, we haven't been able to reach yet, just to discuss the use fully with them. But we did, I did, I got a voice, I got a voice response from those owners, and they are opposed to this, to this change in the PUD. You know, it's not the, it's not the rescue, it's the, it's the, it's the, all the other tenants or owners in the building that operate their own business there, that this could be, should they, should the business evolve to where they needed to be open seven days a week, they could be bringing, the only thing they couldn't do would be board overnight, and I don't know how you would enforce that anyway. I mean, would the village enforce that? I mean, would, how would that be enforced? It occurs to me that's a really crazy. I personally think that the, this use should be in a freestanding building where they would be able to, they wouldn't be interfering with the other users in, on the property. And if it weren't a multi-tenant building or multi-use building, then this, we wouldn't be having this conversation today. If it were a freestanding building in the Geneva Business Park, I don't think we'd have a problem with that. Maybe some of the other bigger owners would, but I mean, it's... Maybe some of the other bigger owners would, but I mean, it's the fact that it's, they're using the common elements for a use they were never contemplated for by us or by the city. So I'm, I'm through with that.
All right, thank you. And your comments were consistent with the letter you submitted, which most of us or all of us have read, provided to us at 5:00 today. Thank you for that.
Okay. Does anybody have questions?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi. I didn't get sworn in, so I don't know if you need to do something. I didn't raise my hand before.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
It is. So my name's Marjorie Swift, Margie Swift. I'm the person who started Starfish Animal Rescue in probably 2009. Thank you, by the way, for the positive feedback on adopting your dog. I appreciate hearing that. We always like to hear good things about us. We've been renting the current place in Batavia, as she said, for five years. We were two, about a year in the, there's a glass place in Geneva. Tom, it's on, it's $1,002 commerce that we rented for him. We kind of sublet it for about 10 months till we had a place to go. Prior to that, we were in West Chicago. All of these buildings have been multi-use buildings. In the building we're in now, there's three, it's like one spot, but there's three places connected. Right next door, there's a building with about five places. Right up there, there's another five. So we have to be involved with our neighbors, you know what I mean? We, we've had them come down and say, hey, I found a cat, can you help us with it? Like, great, you know, but we've, we've never gotten any problems, which is what the letter that Lori has from our landlord. We've never had issues with parking. We've never had issues with the way we've managed the outside. You know, us being there for five years is, that's five winters. That's five winters of us walking dogs, cleaning up, taking care of the property. There's grass in that area, much like the property at Dearborn, so it's no different. It's just a different location. Again, we would have stayed there, but they sold the building and the gentleman who bought it wants to actually build into where we are, so we don't have an option with that. We've been doing this for over 11 years. The intention, you know, I run it, I coordinate all the transports. Obviously, I'm a nurse in my other life, so I don't, we're not people who are paid to do it. We're just doing it on the weekends. So there's not really an ability to, nor a want to do something more than every other week. And that's, and just to clarify with Lori, what Lori was saying, sometimes these animals actually go to, we work with rescues in Michigan, a couple places in Michigan, South Bend, Wisconsin, so we'll actually deliver from there, so the dogs will come in. When we say they're kennelled, they're in a plastic travel kennel, like you've seen, not the wire ones, but the plastic ones. They come out, they get leashed, they, you know, sometimes they use the bathroom, sometimes they don't. We clean all of it up and then they go back in and then they go to, they get loaded back on and might go to Kalamazoo and be delivered to the shelter that's in Kalamazoo. So they are probably, like, they're with, they're gone within an hour and a half. I personally have come to the building at Dearborn on the off weeks of the transport, around the time that the transport is, to meet people, to see how many cars are in the parking lot. I've seen a sign vehicle in the parking lot, that's it. There's nobody around. I've come during the weeks that the transports are on and then come afterwards to see, there's no people there. We went and we met the people in the buildings. Two of them bring, two different businesses bring their dogs to work. The person that we're purchasing from, the person that was there, he had a cap that he brought to work, you know, so it's not like these animals aren't, you know, the people that are renting, that bring their dogs to work, they clean up after their dogs. It's no, it's no different and when we spoke to them, they didn't have any issue with it. When I spoke to the woman from the theater, from Stage Works, and when I even looked at online, their productions on Saturday, there was one the end of September, and it was 7:00 at night on a Saturday, and then they had a matinee on Sunday, and it doesn't even coincide with the times that we're there. So we're not intending to, we're good tenants, we've, you know, paid our bills, we've taken care of our property. This is important to us to be able to have this be available. And I just wanted to kind of clarify some of the things and the question about kenneling. So I don't know if anybody has any questions for me.
I think since you're the founder, you can, you're qualified to maybe answer the question that the gentleman asked about. What's a typical number of dogs on a transport? How many transports would you have on a Saturday morning? So how much, what's your typical volume?
You know, there could be 60, but it could be, you might have a mom with 10 puppies that are this big, and that's 11, you know what I mean? It might be, there might be a litter of, we had some hoarded Chihuahuas that came up and so, and on some of them you couldn't even touch, so they were going to a place that like works with dogs that are scared. So those didn't even get out of their crates. Like, we're not going to, we don't, you know, we've done this a long time. So, you know, a dog that, you know, I actually took pictures. I went over to our building where we are right now and just took pictures. I'm like, the grass is beautiful, it's in good shape, like, she's, the owner has a business right there and she's actually now on the other side of us and she's renting currently over there and we've never had an issue with that. You know, the people come during the week, they're like, you know, we're going to come during the week and come find you. Don't, we're not here, we're all working, you know, we all work, so we're not even in, you know, when we need to get in, we've had a roof leak there, or they had to get a, you know, the fire department to come in and check things out, you know. We have somebody that goes there and lets them in, but for the most part, we're really not there.
Right.
So.
Thank you. Any questions? We have the founder?
Anybody need some dogs? I've got access to quite a few of them.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
I think it answered, because some of his questions and concerns are valid, but I live in Batavia and we have many dogs that go by my house and are, I mean, probably 30 on up a day. And I have dogs myself and walked and when they, in the wintertime is no problem. You scoop it up like you would clean up after any season. So the cleanliness is not an issue. We have spoken to Fona. They said they don't have an issue with it. I don't know if they're a renter and they have no say because it's the, you know, owned by someone else. And we believe the food bank is, like I said, everyone had their opportunity to voice any concerns and we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be a good tenant, a good part of the community, and I think that's what we've proven so far. Oh, and then also, in the notes, there are ordinances that make sure that any rescue, any animal, any homeowner cleans up, that it's not a nuisance. So there are regulations from the city of Geneva, section 615 and 616 of chapter one, where it goes into detail about, you know, noise and being a nuisance and being clean. So there are ordinances that we follow and that the village has in place, you know, so this would not be a problem.
All right, thank you. All right, gentleman in the back.
Good evening. My name is Michael Pitanza. Sorry about introducing myself early. I'm the owner of the building, of the two small units that they tried to buy. I've been there for about, I owned the place for about 10, 12 years. I do forget that. I always leased the building to others. One lease was there for about nine years and the next one that is there right now that is already moving out has been there for three years. And by law that Dearborn Realty provide, there is no, nothing about that you cannot have no dogs or anything like that, one, first of all. Second of all, I, for these 12 years that I owned the property, I was never called from Dearborn Realty about anyone moving in, moving out, who's coming in, who's coming out, or raising the association fee, was never, never receive a phone call. Now that I'm trying to sell the property for other reason, there is some issue. The property, there is plenty parking space available, there is over empty land in front of the property, there is plenty empty space surrounding the property. So I don't think these people sure have any problem with this kind of situation that they want to be in, you know? And in some of the, that Dearborn Realty present, other owners of the buildings, of the renter, have, they had a problem, they themselves sure came over here and proposed the complaint. In reference of the guy that he's talking about, there is a sterilized people, that he's trying to invent something. He was my previous renter, that every time he's been there, he always trying to invent something that is going to be on Shark Tank or anything like that. So on that case, I don't have not much to say about it and that's about it.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're right.
I'm going to go to people who haven't spoken yet first. Did you have something in the back? Okay. Yep. Okay. For anybody that's watching online, if you'd like an opportunity to speak, you can use the raised hand feature on the, on the link and you'll be recognized and you'll be able to speak to the hearing here.
Right, Hendrick Reich. About to unmute you. Once I unmute you, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so my name's Hendrick Reich, I'm a resident on 674 Green Meadow Lane. I would just like to say I really like this project. It sounds primarily like it's a warehouse operation, which to my knowledge is consistent with the industrial zoning as well as the comprehensive plan for Geneva. Additionally, I would like to point out that this would actually show how versatile Geneva is in attracting different types of industries. And quite frankly, I also think it would really enrich the community because it would give younger children, well, maybe not children, but teenagers and such, an opportunity to volunteer. And quite frankly, I would also like to point out that it sounds like the main noise concerns would be going on on Saturdays, so it sounds like it would be very limited traffic. So I would actually question if all of the other tenants actually run a full-scale operation on Saturdays. So overall, to sum up my statement here, I strongly support this project. And, excuse me if I want to throw that in here as well, just a couple weeks ago, we were considering a cross dock just a couple parcels north of that. So if that's consistent with an I-1 zoning with acceptable noise levels, then quite frankly, I don't know how we would decline a project to help animals in need occasionally on Saturday mornings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online showing? All right. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet wishes an opportunity to speak? Okay, sir, let you come back up again.
Perhaps I'm misunderstanding partially what the, what's going on. As I understand it, we're talking about a text amendment to the Geneva Business Park to permit a use such as a rescue or animal in any building in the park. And, and so, am I correct about that?
Yes. This amendment would allow this use to take place in the Geneva Business Park.
And it could be in multiple units in this building if permitted. It would allow more than one, it would allow any vacant space, any owner in this building to rent to a pet. And if I, I may be repeating myself, but it occurs to me that we can't just deal with today because tomorrow, somebody else may own this business and maybe, you know, have grandiose plans to expand it and make it a for-profit business. It would allow that use as well, I'm assuming. But in this particular case, they could, they could then, if there's no restrictions on it, it wouldn't just be Saturday. It would, once we change that zoning, it appears to me that we would be changing it across the board for, so in theory, once passed, they can be open seven days a week with dogs coming there. I realize that's stretching it, but we don't know what's going to happen in the future. And that's a major concern I have, as it, that's a major concern that we have when considering this, if that's appropriate. And then, then, then all kinds of things change with that, at least my understanding is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else? Anyone else online?
I believe we have Hendrick Reich once again. Oh, nope, he put his hand down.
Okay, at this time, if the applicant would like to come up and say anything else in response to anything they've heard or to add any additional information. I know you were just up a few minutes ago, but is there anything else you'd like to have to add before we entertain a motion to close the hearing?
No, I'm up next.
Okay, thank you. Should we make a motion to close the public hearing? Second, Moran. Moved and seconded.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Okay. Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
And vice chair Mead?
Mead, aye.
All right, that passes, close.
Now we enter into our deliberation time. Does any commissioners have comments on what they've heard this evening? Commissioner Slifka?
I have a question for Chayton. The exhibit at the back of, these are all permitted uses in this PUD. Is that accurate?
Yes, exhibit one, that was provided as an attachment to the staff report. That exhibit includes all the permitted uses within the Geneva Business Park.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Madaskil?
Just a couple questions. I just want to be clear on, none of the condo bylaws prohibit these uses or, I just, I guess what I don't understand is, this is for sale business condominiums, wouldn't any rules or bylaws or deed restrictions supersede anything that we do because they would have the right or, that's not right?
They may, but that's, this is the public venue and that is a private operational concern.
So my question is, is if we approve the amendment, the text amendment to allow that, how can they prohibit the use then? Would they then still have the ability? I guess what I just don't understand is how we can overrule their bylaws or restrictions.
I, I don't think we are, I don't think we're doing that.
No, we're not.
We're just saying that for this business park, this would be a permitted use.
Okay.
So this evening, the applicant is requesting that the city permit this as a use, but if the condo association were to change the bylaws to prohibit that, that would be a private matter.
Okay.
And the city does not enforce private covenants.
Okay, that's all I wanted to better understand. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Moran?
Just to dovetail on that comment, that was the clarification that I wanted made, too, that the rules and regulations in the condominium declaration are a private contractual matter between the parties. So is it possible that we could pass this requested change and it would be prohibited by the rules in the association? Absolutely. But we're not a court of law. Our bailiwick is zoning, planning, and the request that's being made here tonight, which I think is completely independent of that. Personally, I've looked at the application, the findings of fact, all nine of them, which go along with a special use request. This is a PUD under the Geneva zoning ordinance, all nine findings of fact, find no problem. I think they've made their case for each and every one of the nine factors, and I personally find favor with the application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ma'am, I can't see you, but do you have anything to offer at this time?
No, I, I don't. I think that Tim summed it up nicely, what the situation is here, and from the community standpoint, which is what we're representing, doesn't appear to me that there's any reason to deny this.
All right, thank you. I echo that. I, I think that this is, frankly, the, the use in the application I find in favor of, and I, and I think the operations, as they stated it, although they can change, I think they're actually complementary in, in, in use to the, to the existing owners of the other, of the other units. And, and the fact that they're basically a touchpad, a touchpad, and that, and the dogs arrive and leave within a short period of time, it, it's almost, it's gonna be a very quiet tenant, so there'll be quiet enjoyment by the other users and owners, you know, for the, in a large way, so. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate to make a motion at this time?
It, I think it is.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the Geneva Business Park planned unit development ordinance nineteen ninety-three dash five-nine to include animal rescue, not including boarding or kenneling, as a permitted use, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Thank you.
Second. Slifka?
Thank you.
Okay, so moved. Celeste?
Okay. Evans?
Evans, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Uh, Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
And Vice Chair Mead?
Mead, aye.
That passes.
Okay, Chayton?
So the recommendation that was just made by the Planning and Zoning Commission will be considered before the City Council on Monday, December sixth, at seven PM, right here in the City Council chambers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Okay. Anything on, any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, hearing none? Anything online? Any, if, any, anybody listening in online have, this is another opportunity to make any public comment. Please use your raised hand feature if you desire to speak at this time. Seeing none, hearing none? Anyone in this room have, has an opportunity now to, on, on other matters to, to make any comments? Seeing none, hearing none? That's item six. Other business?
All right, so just want to provide a quick update on projects that the Community Development Department's reviewing. We have a total of eight right now. Two that will be ready for public hearings at the December ninth meeting will be a sign variation at the Saint Mark's Church at three twenty Franklin Street. They currently have a freestanding sign on the zoning lot. They would like to use an existing second freestanding sign on their property as well. They need a variation for that, so they're requesting that. The second public hearing we'll have on December ninth will be for a porch variation for two twenty-six North Pine Street. They would like to add a covered front porch onto their property, but it would have to extend into the required front yard, or street yard setback, so they're requesting a variation for that. So those two projects will come for the Planning and Zoning Commission on December ninth. That's about it for the projects. Do we have any questions on other projects right now? I'm not sure what the status is on Dunkin' Donuts, unfortunately.
Chayton, can I ask, ordinarily, we meet the second and fourth Thursday of the month this month, that'll be Thanksgiving, so we don't meet again until December ninth. How far in advance of a meeting date does an application have to be made to the city in order to get it on the agenda?
Well, so it's kind of a process, I guess. When we have an applicant that actually files a application and it's complete, we accept that, and then we have staff go through the process of reviewing it. That might take, you know, a couple months to go back and forth with staff and the applicant to make sure that it's ready and meets code, to be brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. So altogether, we, we don't really know. Usually, it's about, you know, two months until we know when a public hearing will be scheduled, and then we have to, you know, per law, we have to give notice, about fourteen days, so it can vary.
Thank you.
Yeah. One other thing I will mention is that the Illinois Chapter of the American Planning Association is hosting a virtual training session next week, November seventeenth. It'll be virtual from four PM to six PM. If any commissioners would like to participate, you can reach out to David or I, and we'll get you set up with that. But it should be a good training. It'll, you know, kind of inform commissioners what their duties are, and, you know, the vital role that they play in the community. There'll be an opportunity for questions, I'm sure. But yeah, so that'll be next week. Just reach out to, I guess, reach out to David, because I think we need to register by tomorrow. I will not be in office tomorrow, so feel free to reach out to David, and he can get you set up with that. I think we have two commissioners so far that are signed up. I think Tim did, and then Rebecca.
I did.
Okay. Okay, great. And I will be participating as well, so.
All right. Great, anything else?
That's all I have for other business.
Okay. Ma'am?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.